Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to a city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered, or at the podium rail to my left over here, your right. I request that you, when you get those cards, pardon me, please give them to the city clerk. She sits right here in front of me to my left. And when I call upon you to speak, we request that you limit your comments, and we're in three minutes, and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law?
Mayor, yes, sir. We are in compliance with open meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a wonderful opportunity for having a new member of our community here giving us the invocation, Pastor Nathan Elder from the North Las Vegas Church of Christ Church. Following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance as led by Councilman Churchill. Please rise.
Eternal Father, God of wisdom, let it be thy holy and matchless name. We seek your help today, Father. Come now and let your wisdom fall upon us, O Lord, as we gather for this meeting today. Give these men and women the clarity of mind so they can effectively manage each part of today's agenda. Reveal, O Father, any problem areas and show them the best solutions that will apply to these situations. Point their eyes in any and every positive outcome, letting these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room and this city. Dear God, help us and apply, help us apply your wisdom, and as we decide on certain matters, make plans for our city's progress. It is you who knows all things, Father. So please have your divine way in this meeting. This we pray in the name of Jesus. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Pastor, it's nice to have you here with us this evening. Thank you for blessing us with that prayer. And you don't have to stick through the whole meeting if you want. You can just leave when you'd like, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the pleasure of presenting a certificate for the Business of the Month. Councilman Black will make that presentation. Following that, we will have a trophy presentation given to City Manager Ryan Juden from Nevada Taxpayers Association, my sweet friend and wonderful, wonderful lady. Cindy Creighton is here from Nevada Taxpayers Association to tell him that he's a finalist in the Cashman Good Government Award. So he's won an award tonight, but then of the few winners that are, there'll be one ultra-finalist, Ryan. So it's a two-level opportunity for you to get praised, I hope. So at this time, we'll, we'll, we have to do, we go down front, don't we, on these presentations? We still, it's been a while since we had a presentation. So we'll all go down front, wear our masks, and, and make sure that we give the Business of the Month a good opportunity, and our city manager the due respect he deserves. Thank you. I can scoot down.
Ms. Carmel, if you'd come forward. While Carmel comes forward, she's the salon manager of Posari Salon at thirty-ten, thirty-thirty, West Anne Road. They've been in business in Ward Three for five and a half years, and we haven't done this in a while, and this one's special, and I'll tell you why. Before I brag about why I selected Posari Salon, to me, this is more than a Business of the Month recognition. This is really a true, real-life story of a North Las Vegas small-business pandemic survivor. And I'll tell you why in just a moment. But Posari Salon, they've been there for five and a half years. They have thirty-eight staff and technicians on site. They offer a wide variety of services, hair, skin, nails, esthetician, I think, which is skin. I just wanted to throw a fancy word in there so you know what I'm talking about. They do henna art, they have a reflexologist, and when you come in the front doors of the salon, they have a really beautiful boutique with a wide variety of really unique products that you can purchase. When I, when I spoke to Donna Posar, she's the owner of the salon, and Carmel, I just learned a little bit about their story of how they survived the pandemic. You know, with the personal care industry, they were one of the hardest hit because you have to interact one-on-one with individuals. They were shut down hard for several months. They had to be creative, they had to utilize their own resources, make personal sacrifices. They tapped into the CARES dollars resources that were made available to them in order to survive for many months. The employees were able to, with the support of management and ownership, be able to weather the storm without employment until they were able to reopen a few months back, and now they're, they're working their way back into full operation. They're following all the rules and compliance aspects with the pandemic mitigation, but they're a survival story. And it's with their ingenuity, their sacrifice, as well as the coupled support from the government to help them to be successful. So with that, for your resilience, okay, Posari Salon, for your resilience and extraordinary commitment to your staff with creativity and personal sacrifice, you remained a viable small business during the pandemic and subsequent economic shutdown without compromising the high quality of service you provide and excellent customer care you're known for. We wish you many more years of continued success.
Wow.
And this is for you. Would you like to hold that up? Do you have any words you'd like to say, Carmel?
I'd just like to say thank you very much that, from Donna, myself, and everybody that works at Posari Salon, they're so proud to hear that we received this and grateful that you guys recognize all of our hard work to stay open. And this last year was a difficult one, but we've all stayed together as a team and made it through to keep our salon safe for all of our customers and everybody that works there. So thank you very much.
And one final testimony, they are half a mile from my house. If they can work with this, which they do, they can do you too. Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. At this time, I'll invite Cindy Creighton to come up. Cindy, this is your moment for all the work that she do.
Oh, this is Ryan's moment, I think.
No. Ryan, would you come down, please?
Don't drop it. Why should you hold, only to hold a few? So this is Ryan's trophy, and I want to tell you first a little bit about the Cashman Good Government Award. It was established in nineteen ninety-seven and is awarded annually to recognize superior stewardship of taxpayer dollars by government employees and/or agencies. Nominees can be any non-elected, full-time employee, team, or department that has gone beyond their normal scope of work. In selecting Ryan as a finalist for the twenty-third annual Cashman Good Government Award, our judges commend Ryan's vision in quickly changing course, which enabled him to deploy staff from libraries, recreation, and other impacted departments into new COVID response roles. Instead of their typical duties, employees use their work hours to assemble and distribute meals with three-square food bank, stand up and operate at a dedicated call center to make business owners aware of assistant opportunities, and see how the city could help. Staff spoke with every business owner in North Las Vegas and contacted another four thousand through robo-calls. Ryan, we're so proud of you, and here's your finalist trophy and for the twenty-third annual Cashman Good Government Award. Thank you very much. Wonderful. So it was Scott Black that actually nominated Ryan, and what's this?
Oh, Tim, welcome.
You got a place I can put this?
Right here, Tim. Tim Cashman just showed up. Named after his father, this award. Have a spike of applause.
Well, thank you. Ryan, wonderful job. Not only are you a finalist, you're the winner. Nevada Taxpayers Association Good Government Award. You know, it was, it was, it was a lot closer than I thought it was going to be in the voting. And I'm really glad you won because it was, it was my favorite of all the submissions that we received, and just a fantastic job of, you know, dealing with a very difficult situation and, you know, just the, I was going to read what Cindy just read. Because of, because what happened here in North Las Vegas is a fantastic example of what good government's all about. And so, it's the twenty-fourth year of this award, and we're very pleased to give it to the city of North Las Vegas and to the mayor, who I know appreciates it and probably more than anybody in the state.
He was just asking me, he says, where's that big old word Darren got that one year?
Some years, they have like a few people in each category. You had a ton of people this year. This is serious competition this year, isn't it, correct?
Yeah, there were sixteen, sixteen submissions throughout all the different categories, and we picked finalists in each one. And it's done, you know, everybody scores these things differently. All the judges, there's six of us, and you never quite know how it's all going to come out.
From all over the state, the judges are.
Yeah.
We have rural, north, and south.
You never know quite how it's going to come out, but boy, I'll tell you what, when I read the submission from North Las Vegas, I said, they've got to win. I hope so, and they did, so then you get, so congratulations.
Thank you. You've got to say it for yourself.
I don't really know what to say. It feels like I just got asked to prom by my, like, dream date. This is exciting. But the thing that I recognize is, as it was being read, those are accomplishments of the team. That wasn't me. I did none of those things. I, well, actually, I did pack a couple meals, but just to show the staff I could do it. But that, this was a complete team effort. The team has been tremendous throughout this pandemic. Employees going above and beyond in every department across the city, time and time again. I think that every day, I'm reminded of how tremendous our, our staff has been. You know, when IT was able to, for sixty-eight hundred dollars, put together a system to help with vaccinations, that system's worked flawlessly. The state spent six million dollars on a system. When I see that, you know, we had our staff within a couple days of the pandemic doing essential functions, it took the governor's office almost six months to recognize you could do that. So I think that our staff's ability to, to be nimble, to be creative, and be problem solvers has been huge. So this really is their award. My name might be on it, but it's, it's their award. They made this possible. I didn't do any of those things. I also think that a big part of the story for the city of North Las Vegas was, was an example of how we use CARES dollars to help local businesses. How we, I hope that you, as a business, talk to staff here as we try to work our businesses and help them connect with the federal relief dollars, and recognizing that those dollars that came to the city of North Las Vegas were spent in the, put back into the community. And that was from your all's leadership. You all having that vision gave us as staff and management the ability to quickly use those dollars to solve problems because we knew we had them and we could return them into services to the city. That's dramatically different than what governments across the country have done. They've taken those dollars and they, you know, built lobbies or done different things with them. Those were taxpayer dollars that should go back to taxpayers. And your vision of doing that, Mayor and Council, allowed staff to go out and experiment with programs, try different things to try and lift and protect our tax base because that's what we rely on to be able to provide services at local government level for decades to come. So it's, it's a team effort. Appreciate the recognition. One of the things I say a lot here at the city is that we're a laboratory of democracy. It's really a quote that's borrowed from the father of federalism, that states are the laboratory of democracy. I believe local government is, and I think we've demonstrated through this pandemic that we can experiment and try different things, and there's a lot of great ideas that are being, that are coming from a very competent, capable staff. So this goes to them, and we'll continue with all the different projects we're working on to try and do government better. And our hope is, is that this will be something that can be followed and can result in a better return on investment for ratepayers across, not just our valley, but hopefully the country. So thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, he's being modest. Look, we know that it, you know, we do have a fantastic team. I'll put the team we work with, our staff members here, I hope they're listening, they're the, they're the finest staff in the, in the state. And I put that from our cops, our firemen, down to people who greet and take payments here, although they're not doing it in person anymore. But I'll say we have the best staff anywhere. But to have that best staff, you have to have, I think, a person of vision, a person of vision, and a person who has the dynamic qualities to bring the entire staff together here. Instead of having people, hey, like, just the other day, my wife got a phone call. My wife is a very small businesswoman. She holds a license right here, and she got a phone call. She got a phone call to remind her that she's going to be up here pretty soon next to have her COVID-nineteen shot. She's a one-man show, one-woman show. That goes to show you that thought from where we're actually, you know, contacting large employers down to the smallest employer. Everyone here in the city's important. But that came from the vision basically here of one person who allowed his team to have that creativity to go out and do things. Hey, again, I want to go ahead and say it, we were nationally recognized by the USA Today for what this city has done educationally. And I'm sure, you know, we have people here on the city council that are able to go and work with our city management and try things that have never been done before. Folks, yeah, it is exactly a team effort. He's not quite Superman. We're all working with him, right? But it takes one hell of a leader to make that happen. And I have to point one other thing out, you know, and I totally went off script of all my notes here. Over here in twenty-fif, twenty, I don't have my glasses on, twenty fifteen, we had another one of our departments that received this award, our finance, our finance department. So this is the second time in five or six years. I'm not a math teacher, so I'm not good with math here. But this goes to show you, what we've tried to do is turn a whole new leaf here. As he says, I know, I've known Ryan for years, and he's a, he's a political scientist. He's been to Washington. He's studied enough and known that, you know, he's had a certain vision. Well, that vision, he's carried over and brought into leadership, and we're making things happen here in a dynamic way. And I'll be honest, I am beyond words when it comes to, well, actually, I've said a lot, but I am beyond, I'm honored to work with you. I truly am. And the way you've taken care of my community, by the way, there are people right around the corner here who continually, they, they get kind of like left behind. Latino businesses who, sometimes the owners, they, they don't know how to reach out, they don't, they don't ever, but they've been reached out to, and some of them were able to get the CARES Act money to keep their families fed, to keep a roof over their head. And so I thank you and the rest of our team for making that possible. And again, we have a dynamic team in every sense of the word. Thank you so very much.
Well, I'm going to stay on script because the words on this page are just so very important, and they are sincere from my heart. And I always have to thank our partners from Clark County and County Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick to just make sure that we did receive a portion of the CARES dollars. We know we didn't get all what was deserving to us, but what we did get, we were able to, like you said, put that back into our communities, not be selfish in spending on things that we didn't need because the people needed those funds, and we wanted to make sure they got those funds. And out of that fund came a little tiny micro school program called SNUMA, the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy. That was really near and dear to my heart, and I know my other counterparts because I am a former educator, probably, it won't escape me. Every time I try, it won't escape me, so I guess I'm a lifelong educator. And so, like, I always call our kids our babies, and they are my babies. We wanted to make sure that we did something for our underserved, underprivileged kids because we know that schools in North Las Vegas, they don't get their fair share either. That goes from top management all the way down to the shape of some of our school buildings. And so we had to do something so that our kids would not continue to fall further and further behind throughout this pandemic. And so SNUMA was birthed in a matter of weeks, that we were able to put our heads together through many meetings and many discussions and bring this important school about to the, to the kids, my babies, in North Las Vegas. And we know that it's successful because we have gotten lots of national attention, we've gotten local attention, and so people want to know, first of all, what did you do and how did you do it? And it took a team effort, but it took your brain, because you don't sleep, to figure that out probably like noon o'clock in the morning, and here we are with, with SNUMA. And it's just been a phenomenal journey, so much of a phenomenal journey that we don't want to see it stopped. So that's going to be, your next task is to figure out, hmm, how can we make SNUMA continue? And so we're hoping that that will happen so that more and more kids in North Las Vegas who decide that they don't want to be a part of the problem but want to be a part of the solution and continue to grow, then we can make that happen. So I applaud you, congratulations, and I appreciate, and like Isaac said, it is such a joy working with you. Your sense of humor is quirky like mine sometimes, and it's like, I get it, so, I don't know if that makes us weird or whatever, but I so appreciate you, so congratulations and thank you.
So when it came time to my opportunity to nominate Ryan for this award, for the Cashman Good Government Award, it was really, well, you'd call it no-brainer. It was easy for me to do. Over the few years that I've been here, I've watched Ryan, and I will agree with, with Councilman Barone, that we have an incredible team, but an incredible team needs a highly capable and great leader. And Ryan, one thing that I think sets him apart from other leaders that I'm familiar with is he's really an uncanny strategist. He's able to assess a situation and come up with a strategy, and then a sub-strategy, and then a co-strategy to work with that strategy, and he puts all these pieces together. And as the current board chair of the Southern Nevada Health District Board of Health, I've seen this with my own eyes, we have a daunting undertaking in our community to vaccinate two-point-three million people and get this vaccine out to our community, and it's an all-hands-on effort. And I'm not here to criticize anyone because it is a tough thing that everyone is playing a role in, and no one was trained necessarily to do this. However, in North Las Vegas, I've watched over the last six or eight weeks, under the leadership of Mr. Juden, with Chief Calhoun and Chief Anderson from our fire department, we've been able to conceptualize, scale up, and deploy a vaccination program that is really second to none in Clark County and probably anywhere. I've been to many of the regional sites, both large and small. I've been to the, it started at the NRC, our small rec center, and quickly was sent over and grew at Canyon Springs High School. But I saw with my own eyes on many occasions, whether it was two in the afternoon or eight in the morning when they just opened, large, you come to the parking lot, the parking lot's full, and you think, oh, no, there's going to be a huge line, never a line, seamless experience, the feedback, it's been on the news, the feedback has been phenomenal. It's just been an ease-of-use, customer-centric experience, and it's amazing. It happened on, under Ryan's leadership with the great innovation of our, our fire chief. And so as the Health District Board of Health Chair, I look at that, and I just am amazed. And many people from throughout the community that are trying to do this same effort are looking at us and wondering, how are we doing it and getting tips and tricks from us to replicate that amazing system? So thank you, Ryan, for your leadership.
I'll be brief just for a sec. I just want to thank you, Ryan. Not, very often does a son in the Review Journal, who are always at odds with each other, agree on one thing. And one thing they agree on, North Las Vegas is being run professionally. It is a business within a local government, and we do that very, very well here. And you show me any good church, you show me any good school, any good business, Tim, that's winning and doing well, and I'll show you a good leader. That this, Tim, what you did here today has proven the good leadership that Ryan has given to this city. So I thank you so much for you and your family putting effort into providing us a place to recognize city managers who do a good job. So thank you very much. I think we're done?
Yeah, I'd like to go last because everybody else speaks and takes everything that I wanted to say away from me. So, you know, I totally agree. I've known Ryan for a lot of years, and I've had the good fortune to, to help and work with the vaccinations being given out, thanks to your hard work in making that happen. But, you know, I always try to think of myself as a resident versus a councilperson, how it feels to be living in a city like this where we have the leadership and the, the team that I know of. I could see both sides of that coin at the same time. But, you know, besides being a good leader, which obviously you are, and I don't miss a beat every time I meet with people and they thank me, particularly in the vaccination side of it, how well we're doing, I make sure that they understand that we're one of the few, if not the only municipalities, that truly show our care for our residents, and whatever funds we get goes right back to them. But what really sticks with me, the fact of being a good leader, we also have ourselves a good man here. And I say that from a personal standpoint, that when my wife and I got sick back in July, he would take the time to call, as I'm sure he does with the other employees, and be concerned about how we're doing, all to the point of having his wife Debbie make us a big bowl of chicken noodle soup, remembering people with their birthdays. And I don't know when I've had over the years a better time reading the council reports from the city manager every week. I kind of look forward to it, and I know we all do, too. So it, it's not just your leadership, it's your friendship, it's your ability to, to motivate people and to let them know that they're, they're appreciated, which is sometimes very difficult to do when you're in a management position, because we're automatically looked at as being separate from the workers. And you've been able to transcend that, which is very, very rare. So from a councilperson, I respect working with you, you know that. And from a resident, I appreciate having you as a friend and as a leader here. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman.
Let's go to work. Thank you. I think you can give one photo with everybody if I may. Ryan, hold this big dude.
Could you pick that up?
And you remember that big box, Mayor?
Yeah, I do remember that.
We need some help out at this.
Let's get this close to the camp.
No, no, that's fine. You're good.
Congratulations.
You're not going to take a picture with it, Ryan? Take a picture with it?
Yeah. I'm just, yeah.
But this is my favorite here.
No, I'll be here.
No, you don't touch it. It's in the trash.
No, I'll be here.
No, you don't touch it. It's in the trash.
Educator, twenty-nine years.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
She's very well.
A board-winning legal team, a board-winning city manager.
Your name is in our, so I'll find you. I'll find you. Okay, okay, thank you.
Catherine, do you have my selection?
That took a while. It took a while, I was mad.
Yeah, I think it's.
For you, I think.
Mayor.
Catherine, I don't know.
time, but it is a moment that we actually get privately with you, and I would like to thank your mom and dad for raising such a fine son. Let them know that they've done well, all right? They're one of the best citizens in our community. Isaac, did you have something you want to say real quick on a council briefing?
Just real quick, Mayor, I'm very happy to announce that, you know, we have, if the word hasn't gotten out, if you hadn't had a chance to look online, we, the city of North Las Vegas is now opening other eligibility tiers that include frontline community support, that's public transportation, ride-share drivers, frontline supply chain and logistics, that means warehouse workers, grocery workers, and of course, we have a lot of warehouse workers here in North Las Vegas, and of course, you know, the healthcare workers, public health coworkers. Please visit vaxnlv.com, that's V-A-X-N-L-V dot com. También esta información está en español. And of course, I just want to thank our vaccinators, our, especially our fire department, who is running the pop-up vaccination site, the Neighborhood Recreation Center, and that they're already doing the second vaccinations. they're already doing the second vaccinations of our very, um, our underserved but very vulnerable residents out at the Owens Residential and Rose Gardens. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public forum now, get this meeting flying here. This is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. So if you want to speak on any item listed on a consent agenda, business, ordinance, introduction only, or appointments, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or any posted, on any posted agenda items, comments on the phone?
Mayor Lee, we have no written comments and no callers on the phone at this time.
Thank you very much. We are going to close the public forum at this time, move on to the agenda.
Mayor and Council, item one, approved city council regular meeting agenda of March 3rd, 2021. It's our recommendation that item three be continued to March 17th, and with that change, we recommend approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda amended.
Move for the, move for approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. You have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through 16, with item number three was continued to March 17th. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as amended excluding item number three.
Thank you much, Council. Any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to move the consent agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Councilman Barone, please pass your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates. Madam City Clerk?
Item number 17, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings for the City Planning Commission meetings.
I made a mistake there. Sorry, Catherine. Madam City Clerk, I so direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Mayor, so noted. Thank you.
Moving on to business.
Item number 18, update on acceptance of grant award of the Clark, from Clark County, amount of 23,000, 23,790,984 for coronavirus relief funds, and authorized city manager is designated to continue to enter into appropriate agreements.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation on this?
Oh, we do, but Alfredo has a presentation, but I can do it.
Okay. He probably got tired of you getting all the awards for all the work he does.
He did. I know. I told Mikhail when I got up here, I felt guilty for, I appreciate all the words that you all said, but every one of them, I could point to people that made it possible on the team. We just have a tremendous team. So one of the things that we really wanted to do on this item is just talk with you all a little bit about where we are on the 23 million, 24 million we received from Clark County. Now, as you know, this was half of the CARES fund allocations that our community, our size, was intended to get from the federal government. But with that 23 million, we have, uh, I think, done a very good job of supporting businesses. We ended, if you recall in the original bill, that those dollars had to be spent by December 30th. And we were able to spend as many dollars as we could up until that point. And then the federal government extended that deadline. They extended the deadline until the end of this year. So they gave us another year runway, which was great because what that then allowed us to do is to continue providing these programs. So we will, we're rolling out a couple programs. For one, that we started rolling out this week was another program to help businesses that were, that have been impacted, in particular restaurants, that have been impacted by the restrictions that went into place a month ago. We've also been able to have funds set aside to do another, potentially two rounds of business, small business grants that we've provided in the past. So we just wanted to let you all know that we're continuing to use these dollars. We have about $8 million left of the 24 million that we are using for businesses. Even though Congress set a date for these to expire in December, and even though these are set to expire now, this coming December, as you all know, the pandemic doesn't really have an expiration date. We still have businesses out there that are suffering. While a lot of us are starting to kind of get in the routine of what it's like to go, you know, for my family of seven, you can't go eat, you have to eat two separate tables. And, you know, we're all kind of getting accustomed to the different changes that are happening. And I think sometimes we might forget how these changes have, are impacting our businesses. And we see that we still have close to 13% unemployment in the city of North Las Vegas. Our residents are really having a tough time still. Even though it may not be leading the news cycles, we still have big challenges. And that, that number's probably artificially low, because some people have just kind of given up hope. There's also a lot of people that have been making ends meet by federal stimulus, which doesn't, doesn't seem to be cutting off yet. We're still expecting a $1.9 trillion package that's moving through Congress right now to provide further relief for our residents. But it's been prudent that we've had these dollars set aside. One of the things that you all talked about is the vaccination program. All of that's been done entirely by Chief. About the only role that I hadn't had at all was when he came to me and said, hey, I think we can do this better. I think we can provide a system and, but it's going to cost some money. And I said, well, Chief, thankfully, Council set aside these dollars, so let's use CARES dollars and let's go and do it. And then him and his team were able to provide the services, put together everything that's been just heralded as an incredible success. But that just started with us having these CARES dollars. So we're going to continue using these CARES dollars in the community with our ratepayers. We hope that we'll be able to get some more federal dollars coming from the $1.9 trillion that we'll be able to put into this because there's still dramatic need in our community. And we hope to marry the existing funds with more funds so that we can continue those programs that we're providing and allow us to continue to enter into the agreements to help people with their rent, to help people with their utility bills, to help people with the different things that they need to help businesses make payroll and keep as many people as we can employed as much as possible. So that's an update of where we're at. We still have some dollars from last year. We're prudently using them. You'll see some programs that we continue to roll out that we're allowed to do. And I think it's worth noting that you won't see those kinds of programs coming from other jurisdictions because they've spent the money on other things, and we're still able to have money that we're able to draw on to help our residents. So that's, I think, thanks to your all's leadership, we have those dollars.
Mayor, Mayor, I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that municipality, our size, receives half of what we should have gotten of the 48. We've got 24. What's happening with that other half?
That's a really good question. I mean, one of the things that the, so those still are with the state. And whenever IFC met at the end of the year, they too were in the same situation as we were, is they knew these federal dollars were set to expire in December. And so they put those monies into their general fund. I think it was $270 million. Of that, you know, we could say, according to the Treasury's math and according to the bill that passed Congress, 24 million of those were ours for residents of the city of North Las Vegas. It's unfortunate that the 24 million that we did receive had to come from county, because county provides services to the cities, to the residents of North Las Vegas. And you receive those services for being a resident of Clark County, whether you reside in the city of Las Vegas, which receive direct dollars, or you live in the city of North Las Vegas. It is our, our hope that, that the state is able to provide those relief dollars to our residents. If they don't provide them directly to us, that they're still able to provide them to residents in the form of programs. There's an awful lot of federal dollars that have gone into the, to the state. But I wouldn't say they're entirely lost on the ability to provide programming for the city of North Las Vegas, for residents, but I do believe that it's not dollars that we'll see, because we had to go through all kinds of different pleadings and conversations in order to get the dollars that we were able to get from the county.
So interim finance has something to do with this, you just said, and it moved into the general fund. And were any other cities outside of the city of Las Vegas given money? Because I know that the population base.
Right.
How did it go with all the other, the cities in the, did they all get money from their counties, or how did that work?
So what basically happened is that Clark County and the city of Las Vegas were the only two entities determined by the federal government to receive a direct allocation. The design of the bill was, you know, this thing, this massive bill, one of the largest bills we've ever seen in the history of our government, actually the largest relief bill in the history of the world, was designed to quickly get into governments, as quick as they could to get relief. So this was passed really quickly by Congress in April, and it was designed to get to local governments. The way the government, the federal government decided to do that is say, listen, we'll take all the big ones and cut them checks, because that's easy, we know who they are. We'll send them all checks, they can get that going right away. And then we're going to send the rest of the relief dollars to the states. And of those relief dollars, the states have to give a certain percentage, 40% has to go to the local governments that are not over $500,000. That would be us. So the, the state used a different kind of math. They believed that the Treasury guidance that was provided at the time was erroneous. That's now subsequently been updated 11 times and has never changed. The Treasury continues to believe that's the correct math, but unfortunately, that was not the math that was used by the state of Nevada. It's tricky to, you know, math's tricky. I went to law school because I don't really like math. And because of the tricky nature of it, it's not really been revisited. But the city of Reno, they received a check for $47 million, and they've been able to use that for programming. The city of Las Vegas received $119 million from the federal government directly. Of that, only a couple million dollars actually went into the kind of programming that we've provided with the city of North Las Vegas. Most of that went to employees to try and move through and get successful labor agreements in place. All the other counties and all other cities other than Mesquite, Boulder City, Henderson, and North Las Vegas received direct allocations from the state. The state believed in their erroneous math that those dollars were in, were in with Clark County, but that's crazy, because Clark County provides services for all residents in Clark County, including if you live in the city of Las Vegas, that they provide services for them. Those were county dollars for county services, not municipal dollars. Those went to the state and should have been reallocated to us, but they weren't.
So you mentioned Reno got money. Did Washoe County get individual check and Reno got individual check?
That's correct.
They're the fourth largest city in Nevada, we're the third, and we didn't get treated that way. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And why was that?
Because of, well, there's a lot of finger pointing on whose math was, where the math came from, but there was some calculations that ultimately it looked like they were coming from Senator Catherine Masto's office, from a staffer there that did the math on it, and believed that the allocation that came to Clark County included our dollars. That's not consistent with even Treasury's example and their guidance gives an example directly on par that shows that we should have received our direct allocations. We worked with the governor's office on it. And you know, Mayor, having worked, you know, having also had a career working in the state, that everyone has a budget crisis and everyone has challenges that they need to provide. In reality, if the state's not able to fix some of their budget, then those are things they're just going to pass down to us, for us to try and fix. So they, they have worthy causes that are providing services to our residents that they're able to provide with those dollars. We just believed, and I think history's shown, that we've been good stewards of the dollars that we did get. And I think that had we received our complete allocation, it would have been a net, it would have been better for our residents, quite frankly, because we've been able to show that we can use them smart, efficient, effective, and that a large percentage of them, I think we're at 87% of the dollars we received, went directly to residents. And the, the other percentage that didn't go to residents went to things that we didn't anticipate. It went to masks and PPEs and different things that we have to provide for overtime that we've had to provide in order to deal with, with the coronavirus. So it didn't go to remodeling, you know, lobbies or bonuses to employees or anything like that. It went directly to the residents.
So do we owe some bit of support to the county to help them get the money they need? That they, was earmarked for them to use and they shared with us. How do you ask for your money now? That's a question I'd like to know.
Yeah, so we all worked together with, with the county. Part of the arrangement with the county is we would get the direct allocation from them, and then we would work with them to go back to the state and get them made whole again, as well as to get the rest of our dollars. Some of those dollars were put into programs that, without a doubt, have benefited the residents of North Las Vegas, programs that have come from the Treasurer's Office. They don't discriminate against North Las Vegas residents. Now, granted, they also, Reno residents that got the $47 million at the local level are also able to apply for those programs. But a large percentage of those dollars have gone into the state being able to provide more unemployment benefits to residents across the state, including residents in the city of North Las Vegas. Considering the fact that the city of North Las Vegas has the highest unemployment in the state of Nevada, you could, one could argue that a higher percentage of those dollars come to residents of North Las Vegas, so it's a good thing that those state programs have been properly funded, although we would appreciate if they weren't funded by dollars that the federal government clearly intended to come to the residents of North Las Vegas directly.
Okay, well, I won't badger you anymore on that. You seem to have all the knowledge that it takes for me to understand it. I don't understand the lack of leadership in that. Let me just say that. So is there any other comments or questions? Saying none, the chair will take a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into any appropriate agreements that he needs to concerning the coronavirus relief funds. So the chair will take a motion?
I'll take a motion to do everything that you said there.
We have a motion. Cast your vote. Items approved.
Sorry, item number 19, approve amendment to the FY 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan for the reallocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of $800,000 for the development of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics System Education Center. Authorized the city manager is designated to enter into appropriate agreements of approved programs and projects as required. Administratively approve any revised final funding allocations or contract amendments as needed.
Thank you. I know that Director Jordan is at another location. Mr. Damian, are you with him? Is there a presentation for this? And if it is, it's for both nineteen and twenty. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, Rick is on the, this call as well and he'll be the one giving a presentation. So Rick, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Um, good morning or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good to be here. And thank you all for having me. Um, I'm going to give you a brief presentation on CDBG and ESG entitlement grants today. Um, the goal of CDBG is to develop viable urban communities principally for low, moderate income persons by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities. Its grant cousin, ESG's sole purpose is to address homelessness. Now, the allocation of CDBG and ESG funds originate from the Department of HUD and the funds are formula based. The various components of CDBG include public services, public improvement, economic development, and housing programs. Now, the annual CDBG allocation for North Las Vegas is approximately one point eight million dollars, which fifteen percent of that allocation is set aside for public services. Now, the remainder of the funds goes towards economic development, public improvements, and other eligible programs such as housing. Now, the Citizen Advisory Committee, um, chaired by, uh, Joe Cato and co-chaired by Rayanne Peterson, uh, it consists of, of a representative group of stakeholders from North Las Vegas. They're appointed by city council. They provide guidance and give recommendations to city council on funding of CDBG public service projects. However, public improvement, housing, and economic development programs are administered internally. The ESG grant's sole purpose is to address the homelessness by way of street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing, as well as HMIS, which is the homeless tracking software used in the valley. The average ESG allocation is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for North Las Vegas. Next slide, please. During the, during this year's fiscal twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one application round, we received thirteen applications requesting a total of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Eleven applications were awarded and funds that totaled two hundred and twenty-six dollars went to those applicants, um, clearly showing the need. The CDBG and ESG recommendations were items four and five of the consent agenda. Next slide, please. Now I'd like to speak a little bit about substantial amendments. Substantial amendments is an action required by HUD to reallocate or repurpose funds, um, from one project to another should the need arise. This allows us to remain nimble and flexible with the funding and shift money from project to project as quickly as possible. All amended changes through this process must be reflected in the annual action plan, as you've seen previ- on previous, um, meetings. This plan is reviewed and approved by city council prior to being submitted to HUD. Next slide, please. As you may recall, in twenty twenty, July of last year, an unexpected fire destroyed the interior of the building that was to house the city's new library. Unfortunately, this fire forced the cancellation of this project. But through a substantial amendment, we were able to reprogram eight hundred thousand dollars in current year CDBG funds originally dedicated to the library project and redirect those funds for the development of a science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, or STEM, education center in the Choice Neighborhood. Um, this action is item number nineteen on the agenda as the mayor indicated. Next slide, please. The STEM Center of Excellence was birthed out of this Choice Neighborhood Initiative Transformation Plan of twenty seventeen. The STEM Education and Training Facility will be the state of, the state of the art, technology, and resource hub and will be located in our very own backyard of North Las Vegas and will be administered at the New Nevada Partners Facility on Lake Mead. Nevada Partners, uh, they're a longtime partner, a provider of North Las Vegas and was recently designated by HUD, an envisioned center, which parlay's well with the STEM Center's training, um, overall mission. The STEM Education and Training Center will feature training in drones, hydroponics, advanced manufacturing, solar energy, uh, virtual reality, three D printing, and computing. And specifically this item is, uh, um, item twenty on the agenda. Next slide, please. The STEM Center project is designed to provide residents of North Las Vegas, Choice Neighborhood, Urban Core, and beyond, access to STEM resources and training in response to economic development and education advancement strategies in Southern Nevada, called for diversification of industries requiring a highly skilled STEM workforce. Training centers like this are needed to provide training and placement for residents who would otherwise not afford it and position and prepare themselves for jobs of the future. The STEM Training Center is anticipated to be up and running by late fall of this year. Next slide, please. Before I conclude my presentation, um, I would like to take the time to say that the community and residents of North Las Vegas, they want to extend their thanks and appreciation to you, Mayor Lee, uh, for all you've done, as well as all city council, uh, Councilman Barone, uh, Churchill, Councilman Black, and Councilwoman Goins Brown. They would also like to thank city leadership staffer, um, y'all's commitment to them and their community in addressing the needs and providing critical resources. Without you all, um, none of this would be possible. Um, even through the toughest times, the city's exhibited leadership in prioritizing and providing the need direction and dealing with our pressing problems, especially with all the issues we've been presented over the last year with pandemic. It's been tough, but, uh, I think we're, we're pulling through okay. Um, and I'd like to thank you all on behalf of me and my team in H and S. Um, without you guys' guidance and direction and support, uh, none of this would be possible as well. Um, thank you. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, do you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, I do not have anything to add other than I do, I agree with Rick and his comments and I appreciate all the work they've done and also for the CAC, the members of the CAC, and for them taking the time to be able to study these things, to be able to review them, rank them, and make recommendations.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goins Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd just like to add another layer of thanks to Joe Cato, Ryan Peterson, just for their leadership on the CAC committee and also the rest of the committee. We are very, very excited that we were able to repurpose those funds and partner with Nevada Partners to make the STEM Center of Excellence come to life. Um, and especially since it's in our Choice Neighborhood designation, um, this is huge for North Las Vegas. And hopefully, Rick, one day we can share the short video with just council. We don't have to do it in a public forum, but just so that they can see the actual video that was put together to, so you can actually see what the work is that's going to be taking place over there. And also I just encourage you all to come over and visit the, the garden at, at Zion United Methodist Church and see how, from inception to what it is now and how, how it's going to continue to grow, especially with the St- the STEM Center and all the state of the art things that will be going on there and in the classroom at the Nevada Partners Building. So, and I'd just like to say, you know, thank you, Rick, to you and your team and Jim for all the work that you've done. I know you, how hard you all have worked on this to make this a reality. So thank you again.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I guess that would be your.
That will be my motion.
Yeah. So we appreciate the motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item, excuse me, item twenty, approved professional service agreement with growing gears, Inc. in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand funded by FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Funds for the installation of a science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM education center authorizing to advance up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general funds for the initial startup costs of the STEM Education Center to be reimbursed by the Community Development Block Grant Funds and authorize city managers designated to execute and grant award document entered to agreement for local administrative fund, administration of funding.
Thank you. Mr. Damian, or that was your total presentation for both of these, unless you had something else to add. Do you?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Any?
Mayor, I have just another question and this is for Mr. Damian. Can you just quickly say how the, um, is there an application process for participants in the, um, program? Or how is that going to work?
Yes, the, the, um, STEM Center of Excellence will be open, um, five days a week. Um, typically Monday through Friday, uh, the, there will be an application center. It'd be administered through Nevada Partners. Um, as, um, the, as I know at this time, um, we're still creating the curriculum and the process for intake and eligibility. Um, these classes, um, will be free to North Las Vegas residents and residents outside North Las Vegas as well. So it'll be a centralized, um, intake effort. Uh, we'll be, um, coordinating with them and placing it on our website as well as their own. Um, and yeah, I think we're going to get the word out as, as much as possible for this.
Seeing no other comments or questions, um, the chair will call for a motion to approve the services agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the services agreement with growing.
Please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
Mayor, council, item twenty-one, introduce ordinance number thirty sixty-two, an ordinance related to zoning, amending an existing PUD plant unit development district, ZN twenty-two seventeen Sedona Ranch, by allowing a two hundred and fifty-seven lot, single-family subdivision on a twenty-four point five-nine acres and a two-point-six acre commercial development containing a convenience store with gas pumps located on the east and west side of North Fifth Street between Anne Road and El Compragrande and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item twenty-two, introduce ordinance number thirty sixty-three, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately twenty-eight point six plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a C two, general commercial district to a PUD plant unit development district, ZN twenty-seven dash twenty twenty Orchard Canyon, consisting of approximately nineteen acres for a ninety-eight lot, single-family subdivision, and approximately nine point six acres for a commercial development containing a convenience store with gas pumps for property located at the northwest corner of Tropical Parkway and Lamb Boulevard and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item twenty-three, introduce ordinance number thirty sixty-four, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately twenty-seven point oh-four plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an RCL, single-family compact lot residential district to a PUD plant unit development district, ZN twenty-nine twenty twenty Benyon Fifty East for a hundred and seventy lot, single-family subdivision for property generally located at the northeast corner of Lozey Road and Deer Springs Way and providing for other matters property related there to, for, are thereto. And item twenty-four, introduce ordinance number thirty sixty-five, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eleven point six-two plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a PUD plant unit development district to an RCL, single-family compact lot residential district, ZN thirty twenty twenty Lone Mountain and Simmons Northeast Corner for property generally located at the northeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and Simmons Street and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you, Director Jordan. Appreciate that. We look forward to the next meeting for those to come up. Moving on to the appointments.
Item number twenty-five, appoint an at-large citizen member to the Park, Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Advisory Board and fill the unexpired term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. I had Cass Palmer, our Parks Director, to interview quite a few different people and look at resumes. He came up with one that he thought was just going to be tremendous, Tom Lesinski. Um, he's approved him and so he's a former planning commissioner for the city of North Las Vegas. Has a lot of experience. He wanted to get back and be involved in this wonderful city he lives in. So I would make that appointment of Thomas Lesinski to the Parks, Recreation, Art, Culture Advisory Board. That'll be the motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number twenty-six, appointed by Mayor Pro Tim Barone of a citizen member of the Utility Advisory Board to fill an expired term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Councilmember Barone.
Yeah, um, I think I had one of the very best people represent me on this board. Uh, long time, uh, noted, uh, a couple here at the show, so I had Gay Show. Unfortunately, they moved out of the area, but I have, uh, another outstanding, uh, Ward One resident, Ms. Jocelyn Torres, who I'd like to appoint, uh, in her place.
Thank you very much. That's the motion and the name. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-seven, appointment by Councilwoman Goins Brown of a citizen member to the Utility Advisory Board to fill an expired term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I reached out to two outstanding Ward Two citizens and the great thing about them, they were both so eager to work and get the work done that we need in North Las Vegas. Unfortunately, I couldn't take two of them, so if anyone needs somebody, just let me know. But I'm going to appoint, um, Barbara Arbuckle.
Thank you. That's the name and the position and the motions. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item, item number twenty-eight, appointment by Councilman Churchill of a citizen member to the Utility Advisory Board to fill an expired term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's always a privilege for me to appoint people who are proactive in our community. Uh, it, it gives me great pleasure in particularly to, uh, to make this appointment because this lady currently serves also as one of our volunteers in police service uh, and has been very proactive in our community with our police department. So with that, uh, you know, I'd like to make my appointment of Ms. Kathy Latimore to the, uh, Utility Advisory Board.
Thank you. That'll be your motion and you've got the name. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number twenty-nine, appointment of a resident commissioner to the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a four-year term ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Councilman Black.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority Board of Commissioners comprise, is comprised of a nine-member board, uh, five individuals that are elected from local jurisdictions, city of North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, Clark County, and Henderson, and four resident commissioners, one appointed from each of those jurisdictions. Uh, the North Las Vegas position is open and I would like to, um, recommend for appointment, Ms. Luchana Turner. Ms. Turner is a graduate of UNLVU and a degree in human services. I just wanted to read quickly a sentence from her interest letter to the housing authority as they were soliciting interest in these positions that were open. She said, "As a participant of housing programs, I hope to share insights that will enable the SNRHA to sustain their commitment to the clients and give them hope and security in their futures to achieve their goals for themselves and their families." So with that, I'm happy to, uh, recommend for your approval, the appointment of Luchana Turner to the, uh, Board of Commissioners of Housing Authority.
Thank you very much. That's Ms. Turner's name and that's the motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, once again, just want to say I, I am thankful for our team. Um, for, you know, this, the award today, the cash reward is really a result of their efforts. I feel, like I said, guilty, um, listening to, to all the different things. It's just been a tremendous, uh, team effort. Um, wanted to just update you on a couple items. Um, as you, you know, or some of you know, um, we had some training that was done for, uh, Councilman Black in regards to, um, how some of our land use and things work. That's training that we're, uh, Chief of Staff Gibson has been working on onboarding. It's something that we felt was lacking, um, both from elected officials as well as, uh, directors and different people that come to the city, just really helping to kind of understand all the different workings of the city. I think it's always, it's something that I've enjoyed, that's been fascinating as you, um, as someone that's a specialist in government affairs, become city manager, I had to really, you know, learn a lot of things about how generally things work. And she's been working on that. We're now going to be providing, uh, some more robust kind of onboarding from some of the different departments. Tomorrow, the presentation that was provided to, to the councilman is going to be, um, provided at our, our director's meeting. So we kind of have this cross-pollinization and understanding of different departments. Uh, we're going to continue doing that as we work to, to build better leaders within, within the city and a better understanding of the different departments. We do a lot of things together, um, as, as a management team with all the directors. We're always, um, doing things together, whether it's looking at the critical needs for hiring within the city, whether it's looking at the critical IT needs for the city and having a better understanding of some of the different operations, making sure the directors, uh, understand how different processes work. I believe will help train them, um, and help them as, as we relate and work together a- as a team. Another thing that, that we're, um, we went out to directors, I, I think we went out to all the directors today, is a survey to help us better understand what we've learned from the pandemic. One of the things that I read in the paper, uh, about a month ago from one of the other jurisdictions was how they were ready to return to business as normal and I couldn't disagree more. Um, the, the thought of taking a year of redoing the way you do things, um, of buildings being closed to the public, reopened to the public, closed to the public again, taking all the different information that you've learned during that time and believing that it's just time to return to normal is not, uh, a goal that we're aspiring to at the city of North Las Vegas. We want to really do a deep dive and understand how different departments have changes that they made to deal with the pandemic that they ended up liking. No one really likes change, but sometimes when it's made, you're, you all of a sudden realize and appreciate the value of it. So we want to try and recognize, identify the value, um, that's been learned, um, in different departments, identify things that we intend to make permanent. Um, and then identify changes that we wished we could have made, but maybe were unable to make and see how we can go about making those changes. I think ultimately, um, we can look at a better, uh, government model, um, that we've learned from the pandemic. Some positions, some different functions that we provide as municipality might need to be provided in a different way. And there was, may have been resistance in the past to do that, but with the pandemic, there was no choice but to try different things. And now it's a time to see, instead of reverting back to the old ways, to see what we've learned um, and how we can deploy resources a different way. We're already seeing that, that our residents have adapted to new ways of paying bills, which means that there's a different, doesn't mean anyone in the city is going to lose their job, but it means maybe there's more efficient ways that we can take and use their time and that they can bolster other areas of the city to provide a greater return to our residents. So we've got this. We'll be bringing back, um, the survey results from our directors and doing a presentation to council about what we learned from the pandemic, how we intend to have grown from it and what we intend to do moving forward to, to provide a, a different-looking, uh, local government, a more efficient local government, and a more effective local government. So I just wanted to update you on those. We'll be bringing that back to you.
Thank you very much. The city manager's report. And moving on to public forum, now is a time set aside for the public speak on issues, not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, council may hear these items, but we cannot take any action tonight upon them during the public forum. Madam City Clerk, do you have any blue cards?
We have one written comment that I'll address first and that we do have a caller on the line. So the first written comment was from Mr. John Jenkins at eighteen twelve Col- College Street. So the first written comment was from Mr. John Jenkins at 1812 Col- College Street, Coolidge, excuse me, Street, reported a problem he encountered on his property. As he stated, he did everything to secure his property, including installation of security systems and fencing. However, when he was out of town, his property was vandalized, some property was stolen, and several homeless people used his home for a washroom. He reports that his neighbors did call the police, but no one came by. He has, uh, submitted a police report, but he wants to know what citizens can do to work with the police to keep their communities safe or safer. He also reported that the security system, um, told him that the police would not be dispatched to his resident if the alarm were to go off unless a 60-second video of the crime was submitted to the police department. So council before this meeting received a copy of the hard copy comments, and I also placed them on the dais. Those include, uh, Mr. Jenkins' contact information.
Thank you. Councilman Barone, is this in your area? Did you just notify me?
Yeah, Mayor, it, it's in Ward One. Um, I have sent an email to Mr. Jenkins, and, uh, I'm gonna ask him to give me a call so I can get a little bit more information, and, uh, we'll get that addressed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins is not on the phone or here in person. Oh, Mr. Jenkins, you're here.
Oh, he's here.
Please come up, sir.
Oh.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Jenkins, this is your city councilman who's just read your report, we'll call it a report, and wants to work with you already, but we'll go ahead and give your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much, Councilman Lee and honorable councilpersons. Uh, you know, when I submitted this report, I wanted to give you the perspective of somebody I'm brand-new to the area, so I'm just trying to sort things out. Uh, you know, my, uh, I guess my situation or difficulty is really safety and security, you know, uh, so when I got that, that, uh, issue from my security company about the ordinance verification, that, uh, Las Vegas, northern Las Vegas, uh, has that in place, I, uh, sent an email to Chief Ojeda, who then she had a, a rep contact me and say, "Hey, as long as we have our, uh, caseload in line, you know, we can sense, we can dispatch somebody without the visual verification." So, you know, take that for what it will. So I did, but I left this last week, and then I come back, and then, as, you know, within 10 minutes of me arriving back, I realized my property's been vandalized. Uh, neighbor comes up and says, "Hey, you know, we called the police twice, and, you know, nobody came out." So, you know, these people, you know, they did what they did to your property, sorry. Uh, so tonight, really what I wanted to speak to is really police support, uh, and that's my issue. You know, uh, I'm not somebody that's trying to complain or say, "Hey, there's a problem, and you fix it." No, I wanna fix it, but, uh, you know, as I learned about the community, like I said, I've only been here a few weeks, I bought a property down by the Amazon Building, that 100-year-old property that's been rehabbed, uh, you know, I got 25 years in education, I'm a retired executive director of talent development operations in Texas, uh, I do my consulting business in Texas, which requires me to travel, but I'm retired, and now I wanna live here in North Las Vegas, so I'm making this my home, home of choice. Uh, so again, I wanna be involved, I wanna find out, uh, what, what I can do to support the police, and I wanna support Police Ojeda. I, you know, have, the few weeks I've been here, I've seen, you know, they do tremendous work, uh, but if a call is made, a couple calls are made, and there's not a dispatch, to me, that tells me there's some, there's a breakdown somewhere. And that's really what I wanted to bring to attention tonight. Something happened in this case, and it could have been prevented had, you know, patrol officer just went by and said, "Hey, need to run along," or do whatever it is that, uh, you know, needs to happen, but I said, "In my case, it didn't happen." So I, I wanted to document, I went and I filed a police report today. Today, I'm speaking, I sent in a request, uh, and I wanted to bring that to your attention, especially in Ward One. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate, also, the city manager's been nodding his head this whole time. I don't know if you wanna add anything, Ryan?
Just, we, we have Captain Harris, um, that's back there too, so if he could join with the councilmember to, to work through the concerns, thank you.
We'll kinda pick up the activity over there for you. Thank you very much. Now, welcome to North Las Vegas, we'll make it a better...
Hey, I'm looking forward to it. Like I said, 25 years in one spot, and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to a whole new life here in Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We take this serious. Um, Madam City Clerk, is there anyone else with blue cards on the phone or written comments?
We have no blue cards, but we do have a caller. I'll bring the caller into the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, this is Jeff Alford, 3828 Fusiler Drive, North Las Vegas. I have a number of comments tonight, I don't know if I'm gonna go over three minutes. Hopefully, Mayor, you'll allow me extra time as possible. Um, first comment I have is, I noticed on the agenda today, the same phone number was listed for every item except this second public forum, and Mayor Lee, you kinda, to move the meeting along, you skipped over the count.
So, that must be something with this...
But I was not successful, and with only one number for every agenda item, I wanted to talk on items 3, 4, 19, and 20, but I was on the entire time on that one phone number, and the city clerk never came on to let me speak. So I don't know if you noticed, but, I don't know if any, that happened to anybody else, but a lot of us may have been cutting, cut off from talking about items that were up for action. So moving along, first, I'd like to congratulate our city manager, Ryan Judy, for his award, it was a very nice one, and I wanted to congratulate his staff as well for all the hard work they do for our city, along with our city council elected officials. Um, I wanted to talk on items 3 and 4 about CAC. Again, I had the pleasure of serving on the committee this year, and I thank Joe Cato for serving as chairperson. We did a fine job, and I wanted to thank the two new board members. We had two rookies, and it was most, uh, pleasant to see them participating and heavily involved with our discussions, so I thank them. And then, on items 19 and 20, the discussion about STEM Education Center, I heard Rick Damian's report. Um, I had a couple of concerns about that. Um, one, I was hoping if this was gonna go through, the city could have found an actual location for the program within the city boundaries. Nevada Partners is a nice establishment, probably will suit the program well, but it's just outside our city limits.
No, Jeff, Jeff, that's not...
And I'm a little concerned that we're using...
Jeff, it isn't, Jeff, it is in North Las Vegas. Jeff, Nevada Partners is in the boundaries of North Las Vegas. I just wanted to make you aware of that, and if you need me to prove it to you, I can do that for you, okay?
Okay. Low volume, sorry for interrupting. And, uh, I understand from Rick what he said, it's open to North Las Vegas residents as well as outsiders, and I was just gonna ask during the presentation if any other city or county is contributing towards the cost, cost of this program, because it is, uh, open to outside residents. And if it's an ongoing program in the future, um, I would suggest the city might consider, unless it has other plans, for the old Washington School, it might be a good location if it's to be an ongoing program supported by CVVG funds. And finally, two more things. Um, this year, I have the honor of serving, um, our city as a representative, a non-voting one, to the Clark County Community Development Advisory Committee. I participated with over 30 other residents from throughout the county on the, um, distribution of funding for affordable housing programs. So I just wanted to give a quick report. I'm happy to say that the, uh, committee supported the three North Las Vegas programs. Um, two of them are by Nevada Hand for the Rome South Senior Apartments and Rome South Two Development, and they both got full funding as requested. And then, very pleasant to see that there was full funding recommended for the Buena Vista Springs Affordable Housing Component in that medical district that we've been hearing about so much over the last, like, five, 10 years. So it was a pleasure serving in that committee. You know, I didn't get the vote, I participated, and, um, happy to see the three North Las Vegas programs got funded. And finally, I tried to make an appointment as a 65, 69-year-old North Las Vegas resident in our North Las Vegas program at Kenyon Springs, and I was pretty disappointed in how it went. I got the email nine days ago, signed up within the first hour after getting that email that the enrollment period was open. I got an acknowledgement receipt with a number saying there would be frequent updates about appointments and scheduling, and eight days went by, didn't hear a word. I called the phone number a couple of days ago, was on hold for 22 minutes, and then was asked to leave a recorded message, which I did, and in two days, over two days, nobody got back to me. So today, I went ahead and made an appointment at Smith's, and they have many opens at many different supermarkets, and within 10 minutes, I had one up on Anne's and, uh, Comino North Day for Friday. So I'm just wondering what happened with our program, why didn't get back, why was there no updates, and I'm wondering if other residents had similar concerns. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
So first, I wanna thank you for your public service. Number two is, if you found this problem was happening to you, I wish you would have called us quicker, you know what I mean? Because we, we move fast around here, and you're kind of like, maybe like the sixth person on the city council, that's how important you are to our city, you know? We would take that serious, um, if you would call us on that. I don't know about the meeting tonight, but we'll make sure that phone checked out, or if we can follow up on that, and we'll not make that problem again if we can help it, okay?
Right. It would have been nice to each agenda item that had a phone number, had different phone numbers, so our city clerk would know who's calling on which item.
Okay, we appreciate you, and, um, once again, there is definitely, we waived the three minutes for you because you bring such a value to our city. I think at this time...
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Is that the last speaker?
Mayor Lee, yes, that is the last caller.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna close the public forum, and we got some stuff to work on, council and staff on some of these reports today from our community, so let's, let's get on them. Thank you very much. Means adjourned.